It's two o'clock.
All right, it's two o'clock. Let's call this meeting over from Long Island. Yep. First order of business to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Approve the minutes of June 6th and 14.
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion made and seconded to approve minutes of June 6th and 14. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Dave Setevick said he would not be here. He sent a short report. Don't see Deanne. She sent a report. A request for payroll change from Sony to remove Sheila McKegg effective June 17 from the payroll. Make that motion.
Say.
Motion made and seconded to do so. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion has been removed. Number six, consider the recommendation from the insurance committee to do the blood pull on the wellness again. I guess that's like we've done in other years.
Yeah. Same cost, same coverage this year as last year. We did have some changes last year. Make a motion that we approve the wellness program for 2016 recommended by the insurance committee.
Support.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommended wellness program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Two 2080 agreements to approve for the sheriff's department between Beacon and Ettaville. They're the same as they've been in previous years, to my knowledge.
Move to approve both agreements.
Say.
Motion made and seconded to approve both agreements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next one is the union contract for the sheriff's department. Have you got a copy of that?
I've seen it.
These are the ones to sign. I don't think there's anything in there that's a problem.
No, those deputies raised at two and a half percent. And boy, there weren't any other changes.
Make a motion that we approve the union contract with the sheriff's employees.
Support.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sheriff's union contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a public health agreement.
We do not have that at this time, so we'll have to table that.
She had a copy and then you're going to sign this also or there's just one signature line on that? Well, there's two actually. You want to sign that also or is my signature good now?
I think yours is good enough.
Oh, you're going to keep that copy? You keep a copy on file. Then I got to send one back to Dave or something, so we'll do that. All right. Is tabled. Consider solution for property 1210 Santa Clara Street. We have a mobile home in disrepair that we need to do something with.
I'm working on that with Eric Dursky and he thought that he could find somebody to remove it from the premises for the price of the scrap metal. Put it out to about five different people, but scrap metal's down, so they would be losing money, they felt, to do that. I talked to Jim. There is somebody interested in just acquiring it, like if we wanted to give it to them. The Mobile Home Park is not interested in it any longer. Somebody who lives at the Mobile Home Park said that they'd be interested in it. They would work with the ... The Mobile Home Park said that it's okay if we transferred it over to that individual that lives next door. I think that's who just talked to Dave Shanahan about removing it with the county equipment, seeing it like the idea of a liability, removing it down there. Ed Kincaid said an estimate at Century Homes, they can have it, they can haul it away, but it'd be, you know, up to $1,500 to do that. And so that's all the information I have. I asked Brad and I asked Jim for an opinion on if we could just give it away since it's been listed on the ... Or if we have to do it in public bids, you know, open up for public bids. The Mobile Home Park doesn't want to wait any longer. It's been there long enough. They do consider it as a hazard. I've been in there. I've ran people out of there three times. It's definitely a hazard, so. I guess that Brad, I just talked to him. He said he thinks it'd be okay to transfer it over to somebody if they wanted. What do we want to do with it? Kind of need to make a decision today.
Well. That is a problem. You know, if Ed removes it, he's going to take care of the gas and all the hookups and everything to go with it. If we leave it there, then it don't cost us anything if that guy wants it. I don't know if it's okay with the park. That's, that'd be the cheapest solution, I guess, for us. I've been by there a time or two and it's not very, it's not, nothing to look at.
Yeah. I'm okay having it hauled off, paying the $1,500 or whatever, just be done with it. It's out. It's not on. So it could be a problem again, even if we transfer it.
Yeah, we could end up with it back if we transfer it.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking earlier, that's probably the ... If Ed hauls away, be done with it, then we're done with it.
It's okay to make a motion to approve Ed Kincaid of Century Mobile Homes to remove it from the property.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Support. Put a maximum on that or not? I mean.
If he runs into something else and has to make a couple hundred more, I think that we need to not, without having to come back for another meeting.
Okay.
It's not going to be $5,000, as long as it's not that big.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to contact Ed Kincaid to remove it for a price. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dave.
Afternoon. The first thing that we have is a signing. There's four copies of the state aid agreement for bridge project BROS. Co. 6291, HJ-62, which is the Alfa Avenue Bridge that we moved up in the five-year plan. Then we'll send those back and it'll be, we'll get everything done for it, have it ready to get bids, we can get replaced as soon as we can.
That's the one southeast of the plate?
Yes, it crosses the Munch County Creek.
Motion to approve signature.
Support.
Motion made and seconded to approve, sign the federal aid agreement on bridge replacement on Alfa. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is we've had some areas of the road that have completely just buckled in the last few weeks. G-71 in particular has two areas approximately 2,000 feet. T-38 has an area about 1,800 feet. The approach is on either side of Buckley Creek, which is on Old Highway 102 or G-5T. Two bridges on G-29, the one west to Lacey over the railroad track, the one over the overflow of the North Skunk River on G-29, east to B-13. All of them have been completed. They're shouldered. It's going to be around a couple hundred thousand dollars here to take, to do that because of the massive amount of damage that was done. We're just trying to get G-71 along until we can replace it. G-29, we have on the schedule for next year to redo it, so there's quite a bit of damage on those roads. The concrete is just crumbling up and we're starting to get chunks popping out of the road and we have that on. T-65 as well, unfortunately. A lot of these roads were built on dirt instead of on subgrade and the concrete's just gone across and is breaking up and some of it's old pavement that is just under the weights and everything else has just failed. So we've got that done. Do you have any questions on those?
Total cost of that's a couple hundred thousand.
It'd be right about in there. And that was part of what the reason for the additional was, is to take care of these because they've been bad for quite a while.
That'll go on this year's budget.
This year's budget, yes. For next year's budget, one of the trailers, 21T, is the second old, or it's the oldest. Well, there's two of them at the same age, excuse me. And this thing needs to be completely relined. The pins for the traps are fully wore out. The drums and the shoes are completely gone. I had talked to Ziegler. They have a brand new trailer which we can trade for around $38,000, $39,000 for, which would replace that instead of going back. Plus a sign bar on the back and all the light bars are pretty well ate out of this one. We'd have it updated, but if we have room in next year's budget, I just want to know if it's okay to go ahead and make the purchase for that for next year. It'll show up in July, middle of July. If there's any objections to that.
I'll just make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve purchase for a rock trailer, approximately $38,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
As you know, Scott left and he went down to become maintenance superintendent down in Monroe County. And he also handled one of the snow routes we had, which was the northeast corner of Barnes City, G-17 route. So we're looking at either like a labor truck driver or we're looking to find some more technical abilities. It'll fit into that labor or truck driver slot to fill that in.
So he won't have his ...
This is Scott?
No. It was put in his tech four, but it's ... We have three of us in the office right now and we'll try to show load. In the past, what I've used is if we had to have a testing company do it, instead of having another employee and replace two employees, we'd be just doing one, filling in with a certified testing company or something. It cuts down the cost. They carry the insurance if we have to do it and you can cover multiple jobs because we'll have the bridge on West Cedar on 305th and then we'll have the one over the bridge over the Munch County, plus we'll have the G-5 project all going on at the same time. Same time. And then right after we get done with one, we start with the G-29 project. So what we're looking at is just to get an employee maintenance truck driver labor position for now and fill that and we'll go from there. But that was, we're looking at doing it in the next fiscal year, so just wanted to get approval today so we can start getting the add together.
So we're just kind of switching Scott to ... In the budget?
Yeah.
Need a motion for that? Yeah. Make the motion, I guess.
Support.
Motion made and seconded to allow engineer to fill a secondary road tech four position. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
He would be a maintenance position, a truck driver instead of a tech position.
Just replacing that.
That's just, yeah, because Scott did help on the snow plowing stuff. We don't have a contract agreement or whatever with the union right now, so I don't know how you guys want to handle the next item for 15.
Well, we can't approve that today according to Galloway.
So we have to table it?
We have to table that, but we have to do the next item on their wages. We have to do that wage scale that we agreed to, so first July, Jody can have it in the system.
Correct.
For pay. So 16, or 15 will be tabled?
Well, let's talk, I may have talked to Galloway too and he said we could provisionally approve something because, I mean, we want to talk about the decertification, what's going on and give an update as to where they stand.
Well, this is supposedly the last day for ...
Till tonight, yes.
Is it effective then or is there, because Galloway said there could be an order, I don't know when it'd be dated and everything would be effective. Because if it goes into July 1st, obviously we need something in place.
But it won't be a contract per se.
Well, unless it's not effective and I don't know when the effective date would be. I mean, today's the last day for objections, but I don't know if the judge makes an order to decertify the union or, and then when does that effective?
Well, and then they have a period in there. They have to wait until they can hook up somebody else.
Well, we wouldn't be approving a union with SEIU anyway, would we? Because they want to decertify from there.
But it depends when that decertification is effective. It's effective after July 1st. Obviously, we need something in place there because of current contract.
We don't have any information on that right now, so.
Like I said, we could provisionally approve something in case it does extend past July 1st and then if it does, we have something in place, but that's just one idea.
You want to prove that agreement based on the contingency that there are no objections filed today? Today's the last day for anybody to file objections. I mean, then we wouldn't have to meet to prove it later. Can you do that?
Probably phrase it where we'd move to approve the contract in the case that the union is still in effect as of July 1st.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be kind of the motion. Let's all make that motion.
Okay.
Because it's negotiated and we have it in case.
It'll work.
I'll second it. This is a point of discussion. What happens if it is decertified? There's nothing in place. We need to make another motion saying that we'll honor the terms of that agreement till another one is.
Well, we need to talk about that too.
That could be the next point.
If they decertify, is there a contract to certify?
Well, it's just that, I mean.
Not right away. Not right away, there isn't.
It's a, it's a year-long wait before they can certify another unit and so they would go back under the handbook, which the handbook has different benefit, vacation days and the like. And so we need to talk about how we're going to handle that and what that all looks like.
None of us, my assumption, they would, they would, they would work under the terms of what the contract is.
There is no contract.
Well, there is no contract, but there is a contract.
No, there isn't a contract. They decertify the unit, there's no contract. And so, so they become non-union employees at that point and the handbook governs non-union employees.
Well, that's not how it was kind of explained to me, but.
By whom? By whom though?
By Galloway?
No, but Galloway said we need to, we can approve whatever we want to approve, but if we don't take any action, they just become non-union employees and are governed by the handbook, which is what governs all non-union employees in the county.
Is there a third option where we could agree to the terms of the ... There's no contract, but can we agree to the terms that would have been in effect should there have been a contract?
Can, but are you going to have two different non-union ... I mean, everybody at the court has different benefits. They get two extra days of vacation and they get their birthday off. If nobody else in the county gets that, the non-union employees, so how do you handle that is the issue? People have complained before because the union gets some benefits that non-union employees don't get anyway. And if they become non-union, then, I mean, I don't think you can have two different classes of non-union employees. I mean, everybody needs to be treated the same. And I don't know what they were told would happen, but if we don't take any action, they just fall under the handbook, which is what governs non, I mean, in the absence of a contract, that's what governs benefits.
I agree with that.
So I don't know if they're aware that they're losing vacation days or, I mean, I know at one point you went out there and.
I did. And it was my understanding, everything would stay in place. That's, that's what I got from Galloway. The act is true. They do not have a union representing them, but they do have a, we reached finally an agreement on a three-year contract. And that contract, so they go, if they go a year without a contract, that contract was, they would, they would agree to that for three years starting 1st of July. So we would have that all in place for, unless we want to start all over again next year.
If we have to, I guess I don't understand. I mean, they decertify the union, there's no contract, there's, they default to non-union employees and so nothing's in place.
Well, it was my. It was my understanding, it was for six months. That was my, that's what I was told.
What was for six months?
That they would be without union rep, not a year. Is it different than that, Dave? That's the way I understood it.
Well, I, I mean, I wasn't at that. But, you know, I haven't really gotten anything from our attorneys on it other than, you know, until here recently where they came up with this. Technically, they won't have a contract.
No, they won't.
And so I don't know, I mean, I really don't, to be honest, I don't know. I mean, from what he explained to me is, is very little because until it was settled, I really wasn't supposed to be in the middle of it.
In the middle of it.
And so I didn't get some of the, you know, some of the other conversations that went on, so, you know, all I know is that I had thought that they were still going to sign a contract and it would have been valid, but they haven't. And I don't know how that would work even if they did sign a contract and did have representation. And they, you know, I don't know. I'm, you know, it gets into the legal area, you're talking a lot of different items there. But there was a time where nothing really was said or decided. And now we're kind of coming down to the 11th hour. I don't, you know, we really don't, I don't think anybody on the board or in my office has got any kind of real clear direction as to which way to go, other than if you do something today, if something changes tonight, I don't know. They may say, well, hey, if this is going to happen, they may want to cease the desert. I don't know. No one's said anything. I'm not really allowed to talk to anybody because I can influence them on it. So it's kind of between them and what they want to do and if they know of all the things that they may or may not have.
Well, it wouldn't do us any favors to throw them under the bus.
No, because we'll still deal with them down the road, but.
No, but I think you have to treat everybody fairly. I mean, we limit, we limit, we limit the courthouse and annex salaries based on the union raises we give, but yet when the union has greater benefits as far as vacation and the like, we don't extend those to the courthouse and the annex and everybody else's secondary roads, what have you. So if they don't, aren't going to avail themselves of collective bargaining and the contract that would provide, they fall back to the default, which is the handbook. And so you got to treat everybody the same. I mean, if you want to have a discussion about what we're going to do with everybody, you can, but short of that, I don't know. I don't know what other options you have.
The recommendation from the attorney was that we maintain the wages and benefits that we tentatively agreed to starting, commencing July 1st. If they are without union representation, if they decertify, they'll send us a letter, seem like immediately after today. They can start to certify again, but they would start to negotiate a new contract that would go into effect until July 1st, 2017.
And, but Mike is also, isn't aware of differences between the handbook and that. And I, they're looking, I forwarded them, they asked for the handbook and I forwarded to them and I haven't heard from Ann or Mike in regards to anything. And Mike, Mike has done a really, he could do a lot better job as far as communicating. This has been going on for a while. I've gotten no communication about it, no reports considering it, no legal guidance as to what we should be doing. I haven't heard anything from their end until I asked for it on Thursday, Friday. But I sent them the handbook and they're aware of what's in the union contract and so I haven't heard back on how they want to proceed, but if we don't do anything, obviously they're going to fall back to the handbook.
So the main difference between what they're offered and what they're offering there is two bookings, right?
I think it's three. The insurance is treated the same. It looks like the vacation schedule is the same, but then they get two float days and then their birthday off. Which I know when Ben was here during budgeting time, he mentioned how he doesn't get the same schedule as everybody else. Maybe that's just something we need to, I think, think comprehensively about, but. But as far as my understanding is, if we don't take any action, then they are governed by the handbook like everybody else.
How much, how much turmoil is that going to cause?
I would take one bit. If they aren't aware of it or have been made aware of it, it's going to come with quite a shock and they'll, I think, well, he said it best, we have to start renegotiating again after a year. It could become very difficult point and I can understand both sides.
Well, recommendation Galloway was to approve wages and benefits as, just as that.
After that, I forwarded Mike, I asked him if he was aware of the differences and he said no. They weren't, they hadn't looked at it, so I forwarded him the handbook. I forwarded him. The, he's already got the union contract and I haven't heard back because they've been on vacation. Ann's been off, I think Mike's been off.
Do you want to table this till the end of the week or do we get clarification?
We'll be in.
I would think that probably be the best is to get the clarification on it so both sides are understanding.
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty critical piece of information that we need to have back from them.
But from my standpoint, you have to treat everybody the same. I mean, you can't, you can't have two classes of non-union employees, whether it be the courthouse or secondary roads or what have you. Whatever your policy is for vacation, it needs to be uniform throughout. You can't play favorites with people.
I don't think you can, but I think this is typically a union. It's not like, the word, not negotiating different bargaining points with two different groups of people. One or, one fall under the handbook typically, and these guys definitely will, you know, from the talks of it, be under a union contract again no later than one year.
We don't know that. We don't know that. We can't make assumptions that they're going to do, do anything. I mean, all we know is they decertify the union and they're no longer union employees. That's all we know. We don't know that they're going to ask to join another union. I mean, there's the discussion along those, but we can't make those assumptions. All we know is we no longer have collective bargaining or we require collective bargaining agreement.
I'm okay, David, with that until, then we can have a special meeting later in the week if we need to.
By the end of the week, I'm gone next week.
So there was a motion.
Yeah, there was a motion.
To.
To approve the contract as it is in case the union contract is in place past July 1st.
We have to vote on that.
Want to withdraw or to vote on it?
I'm okay voting on it. I think it matters.
You're voting on it?
Voting on it.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Table number 16?
Would that be 15?
15.
16 was for, so our non-union people in our, in our.
Okay.
And I was keeping them in line with what was proposed for the contract.
So how does that work too with the non-union people out in secondary roads? Because, I mean, from what I hear, they're taking the same benefits that like Ed and Mike and those guys are still, they still can take their birthday off? Where's that in the, is that in the handbook though or is that?
It is in the, there is a section in the handbook that covers that. We did look at that this morning.
Okay. And our, okay. Can you show me where that is or show I?
Yes. That's all I have unless you have any further questions.
Do you have the salaries for that?
Yeah, do you have the salaries for that? We need to prove that. What are you talking, 2%? Two and a half percent?
It's 50 cents, I think.
50 cents?
50 cents for Deb, Mike and Ed.
And Reed's in the union?
Reed is covered by the, by the union as we now have it.
Yeah, okay. Want a motion on that or you just? Make a face on it. I make a motion to approve the cent raise for Ed
You, Mike.
Mike Rodwell and
Deb Wall.
Deb Wall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any thoughts? Any comments? Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.